Once I get here. Game day.
Oh, it's good. Michelle, are you ready? Okay, good evening. I'd like to call to order the Reno City Planning Commission Wednesday, October nineteenth, 2016 meeting. And if you could all join Commissioner Reno in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Michelle, can I have a roll call, please?
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Ed Hawkins. Paula Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Troy Schneider.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Move on to item number three, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. We'll go ahead and open the public comment item. Michelle, do we have any public comment cards on this one?
And is this for public comment? Or is this for a specific item? Yes, we do.
Okay.
I have, um, Tom. Is it Hill or Mill? Hill.
Okay, come on forward. If you could just state your name for the record. Thanks very much.
Yeah, hi, my name is Tom Hill. And I'm a member of Ward Four NAB. But I'm not here to speak necessarily for just Ward Four. Um, I had the privilege to go to the Ward Two NAB meeting, where I found out some very important information regarding our schools, and really how it affects Ward Four. I know why a lot of developers wish to come to Ward Four, the North Valleys. We have a lot of open space and a major north-south road. But one thing that I'm finding that's becoming a bit of an issue, is not a major issue, are the schools. As a member of the NAB, I've seen over four thousand requests this year for new housing units in the North Valley. Um, I attended a meeting, as I said, in the, um...
Tom, as you move, just make sure you bring the microphone with you there.
Sure thing. If I can get this to...
Yep, don't. Yep, just flip it.
All right.
Yep.
No, make it even better than me.
There you go.
And one of the resources, as I said, is we have a lot of open land. But one thing that we're finding we don't have, our capacity in the schools. We only have two, three major schools there. One high school, North Valleys, a middle school, O'Brian, and Lemon Valley Elementary School. And we're finding, if I can get this into focus... There we are. We can start with the Lemon Valley Elementary School. Right now, it's running at... Let me get that a little clearer. And I'll help you with that. That's about a hundred and two percent capacity. Now, I don't know if you can see it up there. That's as of right now, without the added houses being built in our area. I can also show you the information for North Valley High School. And if you can see that, that's running about a hundred and seven percent as of this time. We do have capacity in O'Brian Middle School. And that's the last... Grab, I'd like to show you. That's running about eighty-six percent. What I'm getting at is, yes, there's a lot of great things about the North Valley. But as we add more homes to the North Valley, we do not have one critical resource. And that's school capacity. Ain't better than that? Sure. And that's the capacity for the children to find a place to go to school. And I'm just asking that you keep that consideration as you look at the upcoming homes that are being projected to be built in the North Valley. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to make a public comment on this item? Oh, we do have one. Thank you very much. Michael Schneider, please. Welcome.
Thank you.
Can you just state your name when you get to the microphone there?
My name is Michael Schneider. And good evening, Commission. So I recently attended the Neighborhood Advisory Board training that took place here in Council Chambers. And I would like to announce, or no, I would like to request that I be considered for the Commission if there is an open seat upon your guys' not forgetting me, paying attention to my work. If I can present the findings, having peeled away subjectivity, just to have the facts there, and you guys think that my work is acceptable, I would like to be considered. So, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public comments on this item before I close. Public comment period. All right. Moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting September twenty-first, 2016. Mr. Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I submitted some corrections to, um, to staff, um, which were just kind of generic, but I found a couple of things in there that should be modified.
Okay.
Okay. And if nobody has anything else to add to it, um, so moved.
Okay. Have a motion on the minutes? Do I have a second? Mr. Hawkins?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number five, City Council Liaison Reports. Councilwoman Breakfast, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good to be here. I was sitting at home thinking, what could I do to avoid watching the last presidential debate? I can come down here and give my quarterly report to the Planning Commission. So, I'm happy to be here. Um, and it's been a while. I'm trying to come down every quarter. You know, I sat through the Parks and Rec meeting last night. Uh, you know, sit through most of the meetings where I'm liaison, but you all are a little different, you know, because we have this appeal body and quasi-judicial. So, it's worked for me best to come down once a quarter and just kind of let you know what's going on. And so I'll start with our city manager recruitment. We are looking forward the opportunity to pair up with a seasoned municipal professional to help us, guide us through these exciting times at Reno. We've hired a headhunting firm that is going to work in a, even to design a candidate profile is the first step. And that's somewhat of a public process. And don't know exactly what the steps will be, but there'll be communication and outreach in the community to design the candidate profile that then will feed into the announcement and the recruitment. We have a charter requirement that we fill the city manager's position in six months. So I think the six-month date was October eighth or ninth. So, looking forward to that very much. Um, we had our first budget hearing yesterday. We've decided to start really early this year. Um, I think that was feedback from the council from last budget cycle. Of note probably to you all was an involved discussion, um, about the need really to stand up an advanced planning division within our community development division. We've been so, uh, you know, development-driven on the current planning side, which is most of what comes up to you, but we need the long-range policy planning. And it's just too much is coming up to the council of, you know, this is policy, this is policy, we got to get there. Of course, we're doing the master plan, but you know, the follow-up is, you know, policy planning is not done when the master plan is done. And we're probably going to go into area plans. We have subject material plans. We're going to be having a planned hierarchy, right? And so, um, realize we need, we're going to need that range of the house as we rebuild our planning efforts. I'm not looking forward, looking to a big budget uptick. So we'll see where the resources lie, but we know that we need the focus on the planning side of things. And so we'll see what, as the departments build their budget, what comes back to us. Pretty excited about that. That, also, really excited about something the council did last week, and that was some ethics reform, which has been on the council to-do list for some time. And we adopted a lobbyist registration program. And I wanted to come here tonight to talk to you about that because it's going to apply to you, and you can thank me for that, because at the last minute I said, let's throw in the Planning Commission. I really do feel that you're an important ingredient of it. And I think it's going to go into effect by the start of next year. So there will be some training. I'm sure, I think staff is working to figure out how it's going to work. It's a best practice. It's actually, we're not the first Nevada city to do this, but we're, much like down in the legislature, anyone who lobbies, um, and there's definitions, you know, throughout this ordinance, has to register. I think it's going to be with our clerk's office. Uh, so, and if they're talking to you and trying to, you know, uh, ask for your thinking, your, you know, soliciting your, um, you know, you and your official capacity, then they have to be a registered lobbyist. And then they will be explaining who their clients are. So it's just more transparency that we're trying to bring to the city of Reno. Um, and I think for you all and for us, if we follow the City Attorney's Office guidance on the quasi-judicial ex parte communication, some of that lobbying doesn't go on because we realize we're sitting as judges on cases, and judges aren't out talking to people. They're looking at the evidence coming up on the record. But there are other matters where, that are not quasi-judicial, you know, hey, I think this master plan policy is the way to go, zoning changes are not, you know, are legislative. And so if they are talking to you and having, making phone calls to you, either development representatives, people impacted by a request, they will have to be registered. So the public knows who's talking to you on someone's, um, as a paid lobbyist. That, and we made, carved out real strong exceptions so that someone who's a, just, you know, maybe they got a yellow postcard, or saw a sign, they're coming in on their own, they're not paying anyone, they're just representing their own interests, they're excluded from the lobbying. So, we'll see, um, uh, you know, I, we just wanted to, I don't know if any of you knew about this was coming down your way. It is coming down your way, and I'm sure staff is getting to do some training, and we're going to implement it. We've got some lead time on implementing it. And then, um, let me see, the last one was, uh, it was said at our, um, at our budget retreat that we are going to start working on the zoning code in totality. I think the council has a queue list of about forty-five zoning code provisions that they want amended. And at that point, you have a really unworkable document. We know we're all banging our head up against it a long, a lot of the time. So we're looking for a comprehensive start to, um, you know, working through some of those issues, some of those master plan, or zoning, you know, procedures that, and provisions that aren't getting us, you know, where we need to go. And then, of course, they'll be aligned with the new direction we're going on in the master plan, which, you know, you all are as versed as I am on the master plan work. And did you all have any contact with our downtown action plan? Um, have you all been involved in any of that, uh, in your official capacity?
I mean, I receive emails. I'm not sure about the rest of them.
Okay, okay. Well, that's moving forward too. And I think unlike, because it's not going to be a master plan element, I think possibly it's working with other stakeholders like our redevelopment advisory committee. But I would encourage you, there's going to be public workshops, uh, going up to build that plan in the next, um, you know, between now and the end of the year. So the end of the year is going to be a busy time. But I'd encourage you to look to that because we're trying to knit together all the disparate activities and initiatives in the downtown area so that we can, you know, move forward with all of our resources and focus in one, you know, outlined further goal. I think, you know, I've enjoyed this. I took on the liaison role, and I've enjoyed it. I think coming quarterly works. I'm going to be advocating when we go back and do our council assignments, that we maybe think about things a little differently. I would love to have one of you as a representative, when we have your recommendations before us as a council, to come up and explain your recommendation to us. I've seen that work in other communities. I think it's a best practice. And I'm also talking about maybe, I tried this before, is seeing the city council can take their land use matters on the side. It can take forward to unanimously move forward a land use issue. And sometimes our council, I think it can help move our council meetings a little bit further along. But we don't have many standing subcommittees, but I think it could be one that could be very work-oriented and help us move our business along pretty well. And then we can always go to appeals on the full body. So thinking a little bit about next year on those. Does anyone have any questions for me on anything going on at the council? Yes, Mr. Hawkins?
We talking about calendar year or fiscal year?
We're talking about calendar year. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, well, have a great meeting, and I'll, I'll see you down the road. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thanks very much. All right, moving on to item number six. We have some unfinished business on our public hearing section. Our first one is the case of LDC seventeen dash zero 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 three, Mount Bismarck Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. And I will ask the applicant's representative to come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners, John Krompottic, representing the applicant. I spoke with Peter not long ago, about a half hour ago, uh, here requesting a continuance, a property owner issue on the west side. Just to give you a little bit of context here, we have that residential adjacency if this were to be supported by the commission over on the west property. There's a relationship with that property owner. It came up today. We're trying to honor, work out a deal with them, and, uh, you know, keep good in the neighborhood and also a relationship part. So we would ask for a continuance to the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, John. Heather, before we bring you back to the commission.
Thank you. Good evening, Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. Um, I just wanted to provide a couple of points regarding the potential for residential adjacency of the master plan amendment and zoning map amendment are approved. Hopefully, we can get that to clear up. Um, in relation to the subject site, uh, there are multiple properties that may be impacted by residential adjacency, especially use permit requirements. Um, those sites would be this one, these.
Michelle, can you just do a man on that at all?
Is there a way to... Can I touch this?
Sorry, Heather.
Oh, that's okay.
Ah, that's much better.
Wonderful. Okay, much better. Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
Okay, so the subject site is identified, and properties that could be affected by a special use permit for residential adjacency include this parcel here. This is the parcel that came before you recently for a zoning map amendment to PF. Um, schools are exempted from the special use permit requirements, but if something does go there that is not a school, it could, uh, trigger a special use permit for residential adjacency. In addition, the parcels to the west and to the southwest, including this parcel and the RR Donley site, would be subject to special use permit requirements for residential adjacency. Um, so I wanted to provide that clarification before you consider the request for a postponement. In addition, um, we have limited Planning Commission meetings scheduled over the next couple of months. And, uh, looking at the schedule for November and December, they're very packed full. So, uh, if you do consider, um, a continuation to a later date, I would recommend, um, scheduling it for the second meeting in January, which would be January eighteenth of 2017.
Can we get a calendar of the next meeting dates so we know what they are for our discussion?
I can, we can give you the calendar for November and December. Uh, November is November third. Um, staff reports have been, um, already submitted, and it would probably be too tight for the applicant to be able to provide that information in time for that meeting. The following meeting is December eighth. Um, and then January, I'll have to look at Michelle for the date on that one for the first meeting.
Okay.
January fourth.
Thank you.
Followed by January eighteenth.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Just for further clarification, we're not going to change anything with staff. This is entirely a, so the January date does not work for the applicant. Um, there will not be any proposed changes to the staff report or the project design. This is entirely about an adjacent property owner and working with them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I can, then, um, I'd like to ask for clarification from staff, and this may end up with Claudia. Um, first of all, to my understanding, after running a few meetings here in the Planning Commission, that requests for continuation are supposed to be twenty-four hours in advance before our meetings. And why would we consider a second question is, why would we consider a continuation for information that's not going to affect what our decision-making process is, yet the applicant is asking for a continuation based upon information that he's trying to put together? I, I'm confused.
Claudia Anson, Planning Manager, for the record. Your correct, a request for a postponement is required by code to be submitted to the administrator, the planning manager, um, by five o'clock the day before the hearing. So that would have been yesterday at five o'clock. Um, the item has been posted and noticed properly. I would recommend that you hold the public hearing today. Um, the applicant has requested a continuance. Um, I believe they wish to bring back more information, but I recommend that you hold the public hearing. And if there is more information that you feel necessary, then you consider the continuance.
Okay. So at this point, I'm going to ask, um, Legal, I'm going to continue forward here with public comment and disclosures under this item, so we make sure those are covered. That's the proper course, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to bring it back to the commission for disclosures now, starting with Commissioner Reno.
Commissioner Schneider, so did I.
Mr. Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
Mr. Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Levis, as did I.
Commissioner Weiskie, as did I.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead now and ask for public comment, opening the public comment period. Seen none. I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. Commissioners, we have a request from the applicant for a continuance. Um, why don't we begin with questions, if there are any, in addition to what Commissioner Weiskie asked? Following that, we can move on to discussion, starting with whether, um, we're going to continue with the continuance or hear this item. Commissioner Weiskie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, John, if you'd come back up, please. If you would answer my second question, why would we consider a continuation at this point for information that's not pertinent to what our decision-making process is?
Right. Only, the idea was that, on the west property line, can I zoom that? Maybe this one would show it. Could you zoom that a bit, uh, Michelle? Thank you. So, the idea was, you know, the properties on, that Heather said, on the south, it's kind of southwest, right, that Angle Street Anderson, you know, those are fully developed properties. We're not, I've been in contact with every property owner around this, the commercial properties. The one that has issue is owned by Frank Lebry and his partner, which is what is labeled as the storage yard, currently zoned I. We would have MF adjacent to I. They have an issue with that. We disclosed this to them, that we'd have potentially a use permit required for something they want to do there. And, and, and good faith, they said, you know what, we'd like this, to work this out with us, whatever that means, it's undefined. That came up today. And because of that, I said, talk to my clients. They said, yes, please go request a continuance. I didn't know about the twenty-four hour rule. Appreciate that. But that's how it all unfolded today.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, um, I'll ask at this point, and I'll look to Legal, too, if there's discussion on continuance, um, and ask for a motion on whether we can continue it, and then if we decide to not continue it, we can move forward with the hearing, and we'll take a second motion on the item itself, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So Commissioners, if there's, is there discussion on continuance? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion on whether we want to move forward with the continuance or not.
I'll just jump in, Commissioner Reno, really quick. You know, the property's been zoned like this for a long period. I don't see why a continuance would be a heartache to us, to be perfectly honest. So, I would move for that, but I'd like to hear others' comments.
Commissioner Schneider?
Uh, Commissioner Schneider, I have no problem with continuance at this point.
Mr. Hawkins, I don't have a problem with the continuance.
Okay. Want to ask for a motion then, so we can move forward here?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Reno.
In the case of LDC one seven zero 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 three, Mount Bismarck Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendment, I move to continue it, assume to the December eighth meeting. Probably be the most responsible. Does that work with the...
Uh, December eighth is a Planning Commission.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that that's, okay, December eighth, uh, two thousand sixteen.
Okay, have a motion. Commissioner Hawkins?
I'll take the second on that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Item continued, date certain to December eighth meeting. Thank you very much. So, moving on to our standard public hearings, our first one is case number LDC seventeen dash zero 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 one six, Ranchera Village Five. We'll begin with a presentation from the applicant's representative. Andy, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening. For the record, Andy Dierling with Wood Rogers, um, representing the applicant. Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having us. Um, have a brief, have a brief PowerPoint presentation that we'll go through to explain this project. This is a tentative map for twenty lots in Ranchera. It's, uh, Village Five as it's identified in the handbook. It's a little under nine acres in the Ranchera PUD, which this body has seen the PUD. We've seen the first Villages One, Two, and Three tentative map was approved earlier this year. Um, so we're just moving through the tentative maps for the affected villages. Village Five, um, shown here in the master plan that's from, in the PUD, uh, it's identified as cottages. Uh, cottages allow up to, or allow small lots, uh, or even zero lot line and duplexes, or attached single-family, I should say. Um, and the handbook identifies thirty-five homes could be allowed in Village Five. During, after the, uh, master planning and PUD process, uh, we continued to, uh, work through, uh, a lot of the different issues on the site. And predominantly, um, one major change was moving the backbone roadway to, um, the east side of what is, uh, Village Five now. And what that did is it kind of modified some of the village boundaries. And so when this body saw Villages One, Two, and Three, which was approved in February, um, that was a little bit smaller area than actually is identified in the handbook. Um, and so that the difference in the areas actually went into this Village Five. So, a little kind of oddity to this, but basically the sort of punchline here is, uh, the PUD allowed a hundred and seventy-five lots in Villages One, Two, and Three. We approved for a hundred and fourteen. Um, the PUD allows thirty-five lots in Village Five. We've proposed twenty custom home lots. So, um, at the end of the day, we're seventy-six fewer homes in these four villages than, uh, what's allowed in the handbook. Area's more or less the same in that the table is in your, um, table is in your staff report. And, um, basically, this Village Five now is sort of a portion of Village Three and Village Five. So, yeah, the lot standards are, because we have much larger lots in this, um, it really is a moot point that that, um, village got bigger. Uh, the eight-point-nine acre site is in the heart of Ranchera. Really, this is the, um, area of the ranch that has the most mature trees in it. Um, you can see the, the old Talbot Lane going through there, which I'd mentioned is going to be moving to the east. Um, the goal along with this village was to maintain as many of the mature trees as we could. Really, that's the high value for this village. Um, the lot sizes we have proposed, um, range from right around twelve thousand square feet to up over thirty thousand square feet. So we're in the, um, third to three-quarter of an acre range on these lots. Here's just taking a look at what the lot layout looks like. Um, most of the lots front on streets that are actually being built, not for this village. They're being built, whether it's for Village Three or some of the backbone roads. So it's a little bit unique in that, um, no new roadways are proposed with this. So it's a little bit unique in that no new roadways are proposed with this. We do have a couple of shared driveways to allow for driveways off of the shared driveways rather than more driveway cuts on the backbone Talbot Lane there. I mentioned the existing mature trees. This is a little difficult to see, but basically you have four colors there. Green are the trees that we... Let me back up. We had an arborist go out and survey all... A lot of the trees on Ranchera. There's quite a few in this village and several hundred more that were analyzed as part of his efforts. And he went through and recommended trees to be removed, ranked them on both their size and species uniqueness to help us determine which ones would be most appropriate to save. And so what we have identified here are the trees we definitely want to keep, which are identified in green. There's 60 of those. There's 88 trees that are identified in blue that we would... We're going to make every effort to keep. But these being custom home lots, there may be some moving of the pads and the individual lot builders and homeowners will need to justify to us how they're going to remove those trees and why. The black trees are ones that are typically less than 12-inch caliper and can be moved. There'll be a big tree-moving operation going on as soon as those trees are dormant this year. And then the red trees, 35 that we have slated to be removed of those, the majority are old mature cottonwoods that the arborist actually said are becoming hazards. And because of their life, you know, they're ending the useful life, and they'll be falling before we take them out, if we don't take them out. So that concludes my presentation. Oh, sorry. One point of clarification from the staff report. I know that engineering staff's going to present to you a modification to Condition 11. They presented that condition to us, and we are in favor of that modification when it gets presented to you. And then also, we had a point of clarification on Condition Number 7. Michelle, if I can get the overhead, sorry. Just a point of clarification on Condition 7 there. There's a sentence that reads that the landscaping plans... That basically, we have a tree preservation credit of up to 30%. That's what code says. The handbook itself actually modifies that and basically says, every mature tree counts for five new trees. So we talked to staff beforehand, looked at the handbook, and agreed that that sentence probably should be stricken from this condition. And then also to clarify in the sentence there that reads that the trees should be placed at the back of the sidewalk. This individual village doesn't have any sidewalks adjacent to it. They're all on the other side of the street. So just to clarify, that those trees would be located near the back of curb, just so we're clear on that. Other than that, we are in agreement with staff report and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thanks, Andy.
Andy?
Turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Chair Gower, members of the Planning Commission. Jeff Borkart, Associate Planner, for the record. Andy did a great job summarizing the staff report. Just wanted to hit on a couple other things. As he mentioned, this project falls within both Village 3 and 5. Although it stated, and project is named Village 5, that realignment of Talbot Lane kind of changed how things were oriented. The benefit is that it helps preserve more of the existing mature trees on site, but it kind of changes some of the density and standards that are applicable. So one of the conditions that we have recommended is... Condition Number 6 regarding that the stand... Regarding standards, specific standards, to make sure that the two villages are the same, because Village 5 has far less stringent standards than Village 3 does. So we've tried to echo more of the Village 3 standards, since they're larger lots. There are no architecture, landscape, lighting, or fencing plans, because each of these will be custom lots. So those will come before the master developer have to be signed off by the master developer prior to being submitted to the city for review for building permits. As Andy mentioned, Talbot Lane was realigned from its current location. That was approved by the Planning Commission through the tentative map for Villages 1, 2, and 3. The... There are some noted changes to some of the street sections, particularly with Silver Charm Way and Fallabella Way with regards to removing the sidewalk. And that's discussed within your staff report. Staff is supportive of that, as there is adequate pedestrian paths and trails throughout the project, and it will not impact pedestrian access. Also, we're in agreement with the modification to Condition Number 7. There is a small obscure section within the handbook that I looked over with regards to the one mature tree to five new trees credit versus a up to 30% credit based on caliper, which is what is listed in our code. And so we are in agreement with that condition. Let me just bring up something else that has been coming up on a number of different tentative maps. Commissioner Hawkins, hopefully this helps with what you have been concerned about with some of the other projects, which is fire response time. This is within six minutes of Fire Station 3. And so this doesn't necessarily need fire sprinklers, but should that change, code requires fire sprinklers if the response time exceeds eight minutes. And this actually goes into the project site directly to where the Village 5 project will be located. With regards to schools, all schools within this area are under capacity, and all utilities will be brought to the site to service the project. The NAB was generally supportive of the project and complimented the applicant on the intent to maintain all the trees. And concerns from the NAB are mainly with regards to the ongoing effects of increased traffic, specifically in this area in general. And they wanted to see the old house saved, but the old house on the site was reviewed by the Historic Resources Commission, also toured by the Historical Reno Preservation Society and professional photographs were taken of the site. And with that being said, staff can make all the findings and recommends approval, and we're available for any questions. I know that actually Janelle wants to discuss the recommended changes to the conditions.
Okay. Janelle, you want to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Janelle Thomas, Associate Civil Engineer, for the record. Staff has been working very diligently through the development of conditions for our tentative maps, to incorporate some operations and maintenance manuals to be developed in order to help the HOAs know... Have the tools provided to them by the development as to how to operate and maintain the facilities that they are going to be responsible for, namely the storm drainage facilities and landscape facilities as are in most of our developments. So I've been... I had written a condition that included language to require that the manual be recorded with the CCNRs. I have since discussed with our legal staff that we would like to modify that and to the condition as shown here. And I believe that you all have copies of this at your desks. But this will, in turn, make the requirement for them to present an O&amp;M manual with their development that staff will review and accept. And then the requirement would be for the HOA to actually adopt that as a policy. That way, when these... When the HOAs actually go out to contract this workout, they have a benchmark for those tasks to be completed. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay. Thanks very much, Janelle. Thanks, Jeff. Commissioners, why don't we do disclosures now? Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Levis, I've visited the site.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site and spoke to the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, I've visited the site and communicated with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Johnson, no disclosures.
Commissioner Snyder, I have ongoing business with Wood Rogers and must recuse myself voting.
Commissioner Reno, I'm familiar with the site and have previously visited it.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open up the public comment period for this item and ask for... Michelle, do we have any public comment cards on this one?
No, we do not.
Okay. Seen no one rushing forward. I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for questions of staff or applicant discussion, motion. Commissioner Hawkins?
Question for the applicant's representative?
Yes, sir.
The only trees we're going to take down are cottonwoods that are diseased?
No, that's not... No. Most of them. I think about 20 of them are cottonwood. 20 of the 35 are cottonwoods that are... Yeah, that should come down. The rest are... There are a handful that are just not in good locations, and they're not, you know, great specimen-type trees. They're pretty common. Thanks, Jeff. So, no, that's not true to say all of them are cottonwoods. The vast majority of them are cottonwoods, though.
We're going to plant anything else once we remove those?
Yes. And that's getting to Condition 7 that we were modifying. We do have... We do anticipate especially some street trees. Like if you looked at Lot 1 there, there's only, you know, one or two trees in there. The green tree there in the kind of back southeast corner would remain, but we would need to plant additional trees along the street frontage as well. So, yeah, there would be... There will be new trees that are planted, but it's going to be on a sort of case-by-case basis as we go in and get into the real specific nature of them. This, because it's a custom home subdivision, we're actually... From what you see here, we're going actually more restrictive on the building envelopes and things like that in the CCNRs. So we're doing that process right now, and it's going to identify a much more restrictive building envelope and requirements for tree planting and everything else.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, I'll ask in your motion, if there are no other questions, to please consider the changes to Condition 7 and Condition 11. Commissioner Wieski. Commissioner Levis?
Commissioner Levis. In the matter, LDC 17-00016, Ranchera Village 5, based on compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to conditions with the amendments to Conditions 7 and 11 as discussed. And I can make all the findings.
I'll second that. Commissioner Wieski.
Do you have a motion in a second? Any further discussion?
Yeah, really quick. There was a recommendation to revise Condition Number 8, which we didn't really talk about.
Different project.
Oh, my... I am confused. I am sorry.
Different memo.
Yeah.
All right. Motion in a second on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I was confused with that, too, on the 7 and 8, yeah. Give Commissioner Snyder a chance to sit back down here. So we'll move on to case number LDC 16-00081, North Valleys Estates 3. And we'll start with a presentation from the applicant's representative. Mike, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, here on behalf of the project applicant. Also with me is Jason Gillis with Tech Engineering, the project engineer. The request before you is essentially the final phase of North Valleys Estates. It's Unit 3. It's a request for a tentative map for 66 lots on just over 10 acres, located on the west side of Pan American Way, just north of Limberpine Drive. As you probably recall, this commission recently approved Units 1 and 2, and about three... Two and a half, three months ago, approved a master plan amendment and zone change request to bring this as mixed residential and SF4 zoning. That has since been approved by the Council Regional Planning Commission, and was... And so we're back before you. This is actually the same map that was included in those previous presentations. Just to give you some reference, Unit 1, Unit 2, and now back with Unit 3. As we noted in the prior meetings, this was presented at a noticed neighborhood meeting as part of the master plan amendment process. At that time, we also included the tentative map with that meeting. It was received favorably at the neighborhood meeting. Primarily, we have done a master traffic study that was originally submitted and included all three phases in our traffic study, which really provides some significant improvements at the Lemon Drive-Liberpine intersection, which allows even our residents and the current residents more efficient access out to Lemon Drive, and it's a huge safety improvement at that intersection. So they were happy to see that. Like I say, this has been through the process now for quite some time in the phases, so we're not proposing anything new. We are in agreement with all the conditions. I know Janelle has a couple of modified conditions that got presented to you. We're in concurrence with those as well, so we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much. And staff? Jeff, welcome back.
Good evening again, Commissioners. Jeff Borkart, Associate Planner, for the record. This is the third phase, as Mike said, of a series of residential developments, the total of which is 252 units. The first phase was approved in July of 2016. That included 45 lots in a park. Second phase was for 141 lots, and that was approved in August. All units were planned at one time, so all the traffic, drainage, all that were considered the master planning of the whole entire project. Let's see real quick here. And so 66 lots are proposed for this particular project. With this SF4 zoning, based on density alone, 109 lots would actually be allowed per the zoning code. The minimum lot size, 4,000 square feet. Maximum is 11,507 square feet. And the average size is about 4,700 square feet. Some of the notable conditions are Condition 5 and 6, which discuss the type of fence allowed adjacent to the detention basin. This is mainly to help with security along that detention basin while also providing privacy to the residents that back up to that basin. Condition Number 9 discusses the minimal landscape requirement for front yard landscaping and street trees throughout the project. Condition 10 requires the addition of a parkway on at least one side of the street. As you can see, there isn't a parkway. What? Oh. I apologize. Mike has provided what we would be looking for as part of this condition. There would be a sidewalk in a parkway between the sidewalk and the street on at least one side. Condition Number 11 has been placed on a number of small lot development projects with regards to the staggered front yard setbacks. Conditions Number 16, 17, and 18 discuss the required traffic improvements on the site, and that has been something that has been required on the first two phases. And to get back to the fire station. This particular fire station is actually at eight minutes with no traffic, so it's likely that this applicant would require fire sprinklers. So that condition has also been placed within the staff report as Condition Number 12. The site sears to the STED treatment facility, which has sufficient capacity to serve the project. The project will also have other utilities brought to the project site and will be required to demonstrate that the... That there's adequate utilities part of the final map process. School capacity for Lemon Valley Elementary is at 107% right now. The project will add approximately 18 new students. 120% capacity will be at the maximum capacity before they start considering their alternatives such as multi-track schedules, busing students elsewhere, et cetera. And the standard disclosure has been placed as Condition Number 24. NAB comments were with regards to increased traffic schools, serascate landscaping, and impacts to groundwater. The water is specifically from Tumwa, not from any surrounding wells. The applicant will be required to show proof of adequate water before building. The applicant will be required to show proof of adequate water before building. Schools were addressed in my last comments. As I mentioned, Lemon Valley Elementary is the only school currently over 100% at this time. Our code requires a form of zerscape landscaping, and it's in the applicant's best interest to reduce water consumption. Traffic impacts are addressed with a staff report in conditions mentioned before. And with that being said, staff can make all the findings, recommends approval, and we're available for any questions, but I'll turn it over to Janelle right now to talk about the modified conditions. Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Welcome back, Janelle.
Good evening again. Janelle Thomas, Associate Civil Engineer for the record. Again, I have a couple of different conditions. Number eight is the one that we previously discussed on the, on the last item. That, again, is identical to the condition that I recommended with the last item. The number seven is to bring that into compliance with the language that was used in the previous staff report. It's essentially the same, but we're, we're gaining consistency with those, with those comments. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioners, I'm gonna ask for disclosures now. Commissioner Reno.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Snyder, no disclosures.
Commissioner Johnson, I previously visited the site.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
Commissioner Hawkins visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, I've previously visited the site.
Commissioner Wieski, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Okay, thank you very much. I am going to now open the public comment portion of this item. I do have a public comment card from Katie Coling. And if anyone else wishes to make a public comment, please fill out the pink public comment card. Katie, welcome.
Hello, I'm Katie Coling. I'm an appointed member of the Ward 4 Neighborhood Advisory Board. Here is myself, I guess. Okay, so in addition to the many things you're going to talk about of the findings, I would like to point out, number four, public services such as schools, recreation, and parks. The disclosure, the letter telling people that the school is overcrowded, number 24, is not adequate to make that finding. It's not adequate, like if you remember the sewage analogy from last time. Anyway. And then parks and recreation, all the sports parks are overbooked. We need more parks and recreational space out there. I think you, that's obvious. Anyway. And then in conformity with the master plan, which is number five, it's not in conformance with the master plan if we continue to keep building single-family residential, because the master plan says that we want to mix up. And also, there was a TODD at one point that talked about, you know, neighborhood, commercial, and, you know, small businesses. Anyway, so we should probably think about those things as well. And then number seven is the effect on existing public streets. I, I don't want you to get excited about the flashy traffic upgrades right next to the place because it doesn't change the fact that upstream the traffic's really bad. So you shouldn't be able to make that finding either, and you have the right to say no. And then, I know that you guys think you can't answer questions. You can, especially if it pertains to this, but how can you make, how does that disclosure letter make the finding for schools? If this pertains to this project, you should be able to answer it.
So the position that we're in is you can provide us comment, and we can discuss your comment during, or your question during our discussion as a commission, but we can't give you an answer during your public comment. This is your time.
Okay. Okay, then, when you talk about it, the county commission, I'm not sure the name, anyway, Bailey Creek in South End of Town, they did not approve a project because the school was overcrowded, and so their plan now was to come here and exit into the city, and then we're going to approve it and let them build. So keep these things in mind. They're work in the system.
Thank you very much. Next public comment card I have is from Michael Schneider.
Hopefully, my face won't get his red this time. So I just want to say I love the developer, oh, I'm sorry, Michael Schneider for the record. I represent Ward 4. I love the developer. They're reputable. They've built a lot of homes throughout the nation. I want to say, however, I'm very displeased with their, their stance on open space. These neighborhoods will bolster families with children, and as it stands now, we have issues with places for them to recreate already. I know the city does a wonderful job, as does the county, providing those areas of recreation, however. Reno being as wonderful it is, as it is deserves to have options for these children when, say, their parents are at work. Options that are nearby that would allow them to recreate, so I'd just like to see maybe some sort of effort put by the developer, put towards exactly that, providing more. There's just no open space at all, no place to recreate at all in all three of the phases, and so it kind of hurts because, you know, it's my home. I live out there, and I know, I know what the children go through, you know? I live on Fire Opal as it is. Well, anyway, I live on Fire Opal, and there's not a single place for any child to play out there, and so a lot of times they're playing in the street and there's no speed control. And, you know, a couple of times you hear a horn honk or a child scream or someone say get out of the way, and it's, it just shouldn't be like that. But like I said, I do love the, I like the developer. I like their, I like what they build. They do a very good job. I just wish they would, you know, provide more open space for the children of, of those neighborhoods, so that is all. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much. Could I ask for any additional public comments before I close the public comment period? And gentlemen, if you could discuss it outside too, I'd appreciate that. Close public comment, bring it back to the commission, and ask for questions.
Commissioner Hawkins, I'd like to speak to staff. Got several Ward 4 NAB comments concerning school capacity inside our packet as well as the, you've already discussed the fire response time. And are we building our roads through Limberpine and down Pan American before we do construction? Because I went there the other day. Everything's blocked off on Limberpine. I had to go through on Budger through the Mobile Home Village there to get to this, the access to the site. I don't think it's gonna be acceptable unless we build something first and then start working on construction grading.
Sure. So I'll, I'll defer the traffic improvements to Janelle with regards to the timing and how that plays out between phase one, two, and three.
Janelle Thomas, Associate Civil Engineer for the record. Yes, we actually do have identical conditions in each of the three tentative maps as, I believe we have item, yeah, item 16, and item 17, and item 18. Item 16 and 17 are identical on both units one and units two. And they, they require, prior to the first final map, that the improvements at Limberpine and Lemon Drive are completed prior to moving forward with approval. Or that has to be a portion of what their improvements include. So, and then if they don't have access, if they decide to start with unit three, they would have to provide that, that legal access, which is their primary access, is through Limberpine to Pan American. So those are required. Those are precursors to any approvals.
Thank you. Question for the, the other part of the staff. Got a couple of comments in the package here also from the NAB regarding, why doesn't somebody donate a modular to bring us out of that 107? Any comments?
I don't have any comments. I mean, I can defer that to the applicant.
Good evening again, Mike Raely for the record. Schools are a tough one. I have kids in Washoe County Schools and facing the same thing, and the, the second most crowded school in Washoe County. So I, I understand that. As a developer, I think other developers in the area have, have set a precedent as far as making donations to the school district. We would be willing to, to a condition that required a donation of $1,000 per unit at time of building permit to the capital improvements fund for the Washoe County School District. And I think that would get us pretty close to putting in a modular classroom for this project. I would like to clarify too, this project actually dedicated a park to the city, and it's a park that we're building and we're maintaining. So there is a park in this project for the use of not only our residents, but the entire community. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Discussion? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of LDC 16-00081, North Valleys Estates 3, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the tentative map subject to conditions, and I can make all of the findings.
Conditions as modified?
Including modifications to condition number seven and number eight.
Does your motion include the applicant's proposal?
Of adding $1,000? Can we condition that?
I need to step in here. We can't, we cannot require that as a condition under, under Nevada law. If you wanted to, we could acknowledge as generosity, but we cannot make it a condition of, of approval.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. In, in that case, Mr. Chairman, I would like to acknowledge the fact that the applicant's representative, on behalf of the applicant, has offered $1,000 per lot at the time of sale to go to capital projects for Washoe County School District, and hopefully somebody will track that. Is that right? Mike, $1,000 per lot, right? Okay.
Okay. Appreciate that. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Got a second. I can make the findings.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project. Moving on to item number eight, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. We did have a meeting last night, but I left early, so I'm gonna let Commissioner Reno fill everyone in on what happened.
He got embarrassed as he was leaving. Commissioner Reno, it was a, it was a good meeting. We talked about master planning on the county level. We talked about the, the wrapping up of the City of Sparks, and then Washoe County's working on theirs, and City of Reno's working on theirs. So it was a good overview. We, we discussed a lot of items regarding housing and TODDs. And we even talked about how there, at least in the City of Sparks, they've kind of renamed the TODDs to a mixed, mixed unit areas, I think is how they called it, mixed development or something. They gave it a, a different name to kind of get away from that stigma of a TODD corridor, but it was a good meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Number nine, questions on that? Okay, item number nine, staff announcements.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. Kind of a quiet day at council, last meeting for planning. We only had a presentation on billboards and reviewing the billboard ordinance with council. Most of the sitting city council were not on the council when the current ordinance was adopted for digital boards. We've been in a moratorium for three or four years right now, and is scheduled to expire in February. Council has asked for additional information regarding billboards, and digital billboards in particular, and we'll bring that, that information back to them in December, at which point they will decide or direct staff to either allow the moratorium to expire or to extend the moratorium to, again, open the ordinance for, for revisit of the digital billboard ordinance. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Number 10, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Hearing none, we'll move on to item number 11, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. I do have a public comment card, so I'm going to ask that Katie Coling come up. Welcome back.
Why does the letter make the finding? You're not gonna talk about it when you can talk about it, and you're not gonna talk about it when I ask. You're not gonna pay attention to the public comment cards. What am I doing here? What are you guys doing here? Seriously? Am I in the Twilight Zone right now? Nothing? I deserve an answer.
I would suggest you use your two minutes and 25 seconds to tell us what you would like us to discuss other than a letter.
Okay. Modular homes are a Band-Aid and not a fix. We need to save the land around the schools so that we can expand them, so we don't have to pay more when we build a new school on administration. We should just expand our current schools so we can save money. It's like basic stuff here, but besides that, you have to say no. If you can't make the finding, you have to say no. That's why we put them there. That's why they exist. So the idea that I would have to do any research more than just my freaking public comment part at the NAB, to me is frustrating enough, but I'm coming here giving you, like, there's proof that you can't make the finding, but you're still saying yes. That's what I want you to discuss.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? I'm gonna close public comment and ask for a motion to adjourn. Have a second?
Commissioner Snyder, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Katie, I'll be happy to talk to you about findings in the process if you want.